Welcome, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll begin with a moment of silence. And now if the members will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Okay. And minutes, the minutes for our last regular meeting on...
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth have been distributed. Do we have any corrections or revisions to the minutes? Okay, so the minutes will be approved as presented. We also have, no, that's all the minutes we've got.
That's correct.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is the spotlight.
All right, I am pleased to welcome Westchester Elementary School and I don't want to take any of your thunder, so I'll let you just take it away.
Good evening, everyone, and we're going to tell you a little bit about an experience that we have been working on for about a year. We went through credentialing. Oakhurst and Claremont are currently EL credentialed schools and this past year, we went for it. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about the process. Credentialing, it's kind of like certification. You make claims, three claims under three categories, and then we had to have those claims approved by EL. And then we had to monitor our growth, collect evidence, and then stand up in front of a panel of EL folks, Dr. Duty, some central office folks, and, excuse me, defend our evidence and support why our claim is true. So it took about a year for us to go through this process. These are the claims. I don't expect you to read them all verbatim, but they are under the categories of mastery of knowledge and skills. That's where we have our claims to do with academics, test scores, character, and high-quality student work. These three categories match our goals on our school improvement plan as well as our EL work plan. So these are things that we have been working on ever since we opened. So the process, we wrote our claims August of last year. We submitted those nine claims in March and we were denied. And it was a really hard pill to swallow and I went to the team that was working on credentialing and I said, "Okay, so they denied our claims. We can go ahead and, you know, start again next year and sort of clean things up a little bit." And they said, "No, we want to move forward and we want to move forward now. We believe that our claims are true and we want the opportunity to prove it." So we rewrote our claims and we submitted them again in April where they were approved. And then we spent one month putting all of our evidence into a portfolio and it's on our website, there's a link on our website to our portfolio that has all the evidence to support those nine claims. And then in August, we presented and our official acceptance was October of this year. We officially became one of seven schools in the country to be credentialed. And we were one, one of two that got it done the fastest. You can only get it done in four years, that's the minimum amount of time, and we did it in four years. I would also like to remind you that not only did we become an EL school in four years, we became a school in four years. So those two things were simultaneous as we were building culture and building our school and what we believed, who we were. It was all under this umbrella of EL. So now I would like to turn it over to our PTA President, Tim Martin.
Well, obviously, this was a pretty exciting event and I was talking with Ms. Lawson about this. She's like, "I would love to have a big group represented at the conference." And I was like, "Well, that sounds great." And she's like, "Maybe we could get seven to go." And I was like, "All right." So come October, she showed me how much it was going to cost to send seven people. And I was like, "Okay, we can, we can, we can work with this." So we went to the PTA Board and said, "You know what? We spend money on signs, we can spend money on paint, we spend money on supplies. I think this year, we really should invest in our people." And in just a second, you're going to hear from them and I think you're going to see what a great investment that was. So without further ado, I'd like to have our teachers come up and share a little about their conference experience.
Good evening. I'm Brooke Nation, I'm the Media Specialist at Westchester. And, let's see, so I went to this class, Equity Pushing Through Bias and Text. And one of the things I want to say about it is that in the session, the person that was doing it let us through so many great articles about reading children's literature and articles through the lens of equity, which aligns so much of what we're doing at Westchester as well as through the whole district and City of Decatur. And I was really happy to have this class because after all the classes we had, this really aligned with the job that I do as a librarian, but also one that I can know I could take back to the staff because I know that we all are dedicated in making sure that we are, have the strongest intentions. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. You guys are looking very different from the little kids that I teach. And making sure that the...
We're really not that different.
And the, so one of the tools that she gave us, it's linked here, but it was a form from the Teaching Tolerance and it's reading diversity. And the idea is that you could take this form and as well as many, many other resources she gave us. And it would give you questions about looking through books with the lens of, through inclusion and equality. And I'm just going to give you two examples of the questions. One was, "Does the content perpetuate or rely on stereotypes, generalizations, or misrepresentations?" So as you're reading maybe one of the books on this table, you might look through these questions and ask yourself a variety of questions. Another one was, "Consider the gaps and silences. Are certain people or groups left out or given only a silent or insubstantial role?" And this list goes on to about 21 questions or thoughts that you might ask yourself as you're looking through children's books to decide if it is worth putting into your canon of resources. Luckily, the publishing world is coming around for children's lit and we do have a variety of books that we can have, but we're in a dire need of having an intentional variety in all of our schools. And luckily, many schools are already being intentional about this, but I was really happy to see this at a major conference, that this is important and everybody needs to be a part of it. So far, we have some resources that make our libraries equitable, making sure that our students can see themselves, that they have access to books where they can see themselves, they can see others that look like them, that they can be affirmed that their life is like the characters they see in book because we know that's very important. But we also need books in our library that allow our students to see, see others that feel and think differently than they do. One of the last notes I'll make here is that one of the articles in this conference was that we really need to be thinking that these are not diverse books. Diversity is the eye of the reader and the listener and that we really need to be, we cannot call our books no more, no longer diversity. This is not a diverse collection. This is a collection that represents our school and the world that we live in. So thank you. And you're not that scary.
All right. So Jen and I had the opportunity to go to a class that was titled, Building Crew and Character Through the Arts. And so because like I've really make, made a big effort in my classroom to integrate the arts into academics, I hadn't really brought it into our crew meetings and really like building a community through it. And we were given resources and shown lots of activities to where like everybody could step in the same way and really build from each other and understand each other by using visual arts and music and things like that.
Yeah. The slide before this says, "Representation Matters." And what we noticed that through Pass the Pen, that each child, the concept behind it is that you get a piece of paper and each one of you passes the pen and has a certain amount of time that you're able to draw something that represents you. And so each child really does feel like they're represented in crew and it truly helps us build that crew mentality along with each person feels individually represented in the drawing. And the drawing up there is silly, but it was a great drawing that Stacy and I were able to participate in where we each were able to contribute at the table to a final product and then enhance it and just talk about what each of those meant for us. So we really found that it's going to build our crew a lot.
Hi, I'm Lori Bigum and I teach second grade at Westchester. Okay, so the class that I went to, actually, it was more of a discussion. It was called Teaching Mathematics and it's basically about teaching mathematics to students in a way that gets them to think strategically. And we are introducing them to world, real world, sorry, problems that they can kind of connect with on a, on a more abstract level than just giving them algorithms. So the basis is that we want to teach them strategies before algorithms. And so they'll get what's called a grapple problem. And so a grapple problem is something that they just need to kind of think about, it's not an automatic answer. And we were introduced to the three act task. And so the way it's built is there is a website and go to the website and there's a short video. And I think this one that we did was about whoppers. And so they're shown a short video and it's mathematically based and this one is someone pouring whoppers into a glass bottle. And so that's all they see. And so from that, they have to say what they notice, what they wonder, and what, what more information they need to solve the problem. And then they're supposed to estimate some, a number that's too small or a number that's too big and go from there. And so the second, oh, and so then we have a discussion and they tell you what they need. And so as soon as they come across things that they, that they know they'll need to solve the problem, you play the second video. And so the second video gives you a bit more information. And for this one, it tells you how many whoppers are in the bag and how many bags it took to fill up the jar. And so then they go back to their task and there's a flip side to the sheet where they can draw out their strategies. And so they use different strategies. Not everybody's at the same level, so some may use repeated addition, some may use multiplication. Then, then we have another discussion and we talk about how, what, what strategy they used and why they use that strategy and why they think the strategy is most appropriate. And so once everybody has given an answer, we play the third video and the video gives you the, it gives you the answer and it tells you, well, then we, after we, we watched the video, we talk about strategies that worked and strategies that didn't work and why they worked and why they didn't work. So it's more of a strategic and it just gets them to think out of the box. And I don't think there was another. Oh, no, that's not mine. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Manassas. I'm the Instructional Coach at Westchester. And I was really honored to be included in the crew that was sent to national conferences. This is my first year at Westchester, so I wasn't involved in the credentialing work there. I have been involved in it at Claremont a couple of years ago, so I know how incredibly hard this crew has worked, so I was honored to be part of it. One of the sessions I attended was called Communicating Student Achievement Standards-Based Grading. And it was a great affirmation for what we're already doing here in Decatur. I got to talk with educators from across the country, some schools that were just making the shift from traditional grading to standards-based grading and some that were more sort of where we are and looking to push our work forward. What are the next steps for us in standards-based grading? And it definitely aligned with some of the other sessions about why we separate standards-based grading from habits of scholarship assessment and how can we best communicate what mastery of standards looks like to our students and to our parents. And I think that aligned with one of the sessions that Abby went to about using exemplars to model this work for our students. So appreciate being able to go and looking forward to moving that work forward.
I've always wondered why there's a phone there.
Okay. Hi, how's everybody? I'm Pam Maxon. I teach first grade at Westchester and I was honored to be able to go too. I truly appreciate the PTA and their wonderful gift to us and being able to go and see all of these amazing educators and learning so much from them. I went to a class that was taught by Ron Berger, who is the head of EL, and he taught us about looking at quality work. And the one that I showed up there, it's like 11 pages long and it was written by a first grader. It was a fabulous work and it's, it had Princess Matthew. And when Mr. Berger asked him why it was Princess Matthew, he said, "Well, it's my best friend, I had to put him in." And he also had another character named Matthew because it was his best friend. So it was just a fabulous story. Obviously, not every word is correct, but he wasn't afraid to write it. And he wrote everything he wanted to say, whether he knew how to spell it or not. And so my kids loved this. I read this to them often. They want to hear it again and again. And I asked them, "What makes this quality work?" And they said, "The things that are on this list, it's long, but on the bottom, it says, 'He stayed on topic throughout the entire piece. He had ins and outs. He had characters come in, but he stayed on topic.'" They had space between his words. He worked on capitals, periods, and even quotation marks at times. He used sounds to spell out the hard words, but he didn't let those hard words trick him at all. He tried to correct his mistakes and he even numbered his pages. That was a big thing for my kids. And he put an ending on it. So he made sure that that story was a complete story. All my kids are doing better with writing because of that example. All of my kids are so excited about writing, I can't get them to stop. It's been great. And a couple of my kids want to be writers when they grow up. So I feel like I've gotten a lot out of this opportunity and I, I don't know what's going to happen from there, but I'm excited to see. Is that right? Nope, hang on. I don't know which way to go. All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Abby Duzak, second grade at Westchester. I went to the same session that Pam went to about high-quality work and really feeds off a lot of what Pam was talking about, about using examples in our work. Ron Berger said this quote, and this just really stuck with me, that "Too often, we tell our students to show us their work. What do we really mean by that?" And going back off Pam's example, really like unpacking what's in good work. What does this look like? How can we teach our students to be better writers and show better work in everything we do by discussing what each piece of work looks like, what it means? And you can incorporate models into everything, really showing a good example for every genre, every subject, even a good reading book, writing, science section, everything you do should have a model in it and using those throughout the day. And then building your model off what, what must be included in your project, the non-negotiables, what has to be in there, what size, what do you, are you looking for as a teacher? And then going off of what that looks like. And he's also said something else that really stuck with me, you know, you're not going to learn to play soccer by watching, watching, listening to directions. You're going to learn by watching the game. And I think that's really what we want in our classroom. We want kids to be able to see what, what we want from them and do their best work. And that's what we've been doing at Westchester and I think it's really working, as Pam said. They've got models, they know what to look for, and they're using all those things that we're looking for now.
So this process took us a long time and there was a huge reward for us as professionals and for our school. So our next steps, we're sharing this information, obviously, with people in our school, in our community. We did a big presentation last week for our PTA community. The teachers here will be sharing some of best practices with our faculty and we will begin to collect evidence because in five years, we go up for re-credentialing. So the process just starts again and we're really looking forward to it and we're really excited to bring this to Decatur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. That was really helpful. I had the pleasure of going to that conference as well and it was really awesome to see our folks up there getting recognized for, for the great work that they've done. I also really appreciate, I first learned about the submission and resubmission when we went to the, where they were doing their basic defense of their project that Rochelle was talking about. And I just thought that is such a great example of perseverance that we want our children to be demonstrating and how great to see that the adults are doing that as well and modeling that for them. So, great job, thank you for all your hard work. That's really incredible that we now have three of our five lower elementary schools credentialed is absolutely phenomenal, so great work.
Yeah, I was just going to add too, I'm so glad that y'all didn't take no for an answer and what a great way to lead by example for the students in your school. And I'm excited about everything that you guys have learned and I love that you're sharing it with your students, but also with your colleagues around the district so that we can hopefully get all of our schools credentialed. So, well done, quite impressive.
Anyone else?
Great job.
Terrific and great presentation, thank you. I do have a question about the library. So is the library currently appropriately representative? I don't know what word we're supposed to use.
Yes, I think that our teachers are really good at giving, we have a wish list, it's ongoing, and they can add any books that they think that need to be seen in their library. And also, it's very intentional. Now that I have these forums, I'm more intentional about reviewing what's in the library and if we have already met that and where we need to go. Our population, every school is different. Our school is diverse in many different ways and it's just important that every child has a book that they can see and are affirmed by. And I think we've done an excellent job.
Good. I couldn't tell if you were...
I think, I think in this conference, it was more like you go to this conference and you're like, wow, what we're doing, it works, it matters, and it's worth sharing with hundreds of other educators and there's a process. I think that was the piece that's missing is that if you want to talk to another school, I get lots of libraries and other teachers are asking me because I take this work very seriously and I'm very happy about it. But the process of how to talk to other people about how you do it has been harder than why. And now that I have all of these, I mean, if you shared that presentation, you flicked on that link, okay, there's a thousand articles here and they're all fantastic and vetted. And that's something I can now take and I can share with not only our City of Decatur teachers, but other school systems that are looking for stuff too.
Terrific.
Great question.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is public comment, I think. So we've got five people, so we'll do three minutes apiece, please. Oh, I'm supposed to call a name. Margaret Ciccarelli.
Thank you, and I just want to share a bit. I'm a parent of two children at Westchester. I have one in K and one in third. And I want to talk about, from a parental perspective, what it's been like to watch our teachers go through this wonderful experience of being able to attend a conference. We had a great PTA meeting last week at which the teachers shared a presentation very similar to what they just shared with you. We provided food and we provided childcare to try to maximize attendance and allow families who may have hardships, one-parent families, or allow both parents to attend when usually one would stay home to provide childcare. And they were so excited, the parents, to hear from the teachers what they'd learned. And I just wanted to thank you as a board for being our partners in sharing and allowing us to provide high-quality professional learning to our educators. It's the main thing. And it's the main thing that influences our students' experience in school and their preparedness for the future. And we wanted to thank you and tell you how pleased as parents we are to be able to support this work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Megan Welch.
Hi, me too, essentially. I'm also a Westchester parent. I've been a teacher educator and researcher and I currently work in public education for the state. I'm glad that I got to follow such a great presentation and I also saw it at the PTA meeting. I, I, I thank you for this opportunity to say how important I think learning experiences like the one described are for all of our City of Decatur teachers. If we have the funding, I can't think of a better way to spend it than to send classroom teachers to professional conferences. It shows that we, as a Westchester community and as a Decatur, wider Decatur community, that we value our teachers' development. They are the investment that provides both short and long-term returns for our current and future students that go through this system. They are the experts that implement the learning in our classrooms. And that's part of the bigger idea that I want to advocate for in these short comments. As often as we can as a community, we should support CSD teachers as they do the hard day-to-day work of caring for our children. Care that includes teaching academic content, emotional support, and protecting. In return for their expertise and dedication, I want our stakeholders to publicly support and focus advocacy on our teachers specifically. I acknowledge that the board, obviously, and audience members, again, we're, you know, kind of preaching to the choir, but that they might already do this, but the wider parent population and community could benefit from more explicit rationale behind decisions made to support and to recruit and to retain our excellent CSD teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, excuse me, Michael Davis.
Good evening, all of you again. Michael Davis, for the record, and I think I'll be fairly brief. I'll be submitting a more formal response to the policies, but I just wanted to give a verbal response this evening. As it relates to the proposed Student and Community Complaints Proposal AR 2.7D2, for the most part, we're satisfied with this, but there are just a couple of things. It's silent on a statement referring the matter to the Georgia Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights. It's also silent on retaliation. Specifically, there are, I met with Maggie, those of us met with Maggie, there were three sections included in the document that I handed her that were related specifically to notifying, providing notice to parents that they can either bypass an internal procedure and go directly to the state to file a complaint, which is, it's an important omission, I would The employee protection plan really is just not, it doesn't speak at all to what we met about. So it'll be a more formal written complaint about that, but it, there's a small section, it seems, let me backtrack. Really, the point of that meeting was to discuss procedures that could be put in place for employees to make complaints against other employees when they have witnessed acts of discrimination against students or other employees in the system. And so I think there's a very brief section of this that discusses that, but there's nothing spelled out as far as a procedure. So that hasn't been addressed at all. And then finally, the Title VI statement that is on the school's website, there is a statement there that it's coming soon, but there's been no information there and that's been there for, I would say, a month at this point. It seems that at least Dr. Huddleston's name could be put as the contact since that was the purpose of her hire, excuse me, as the Equity Director. So at least her information could be put up there. I'm not sure how long it will take to identify who other liaisons would be, but there's just no contact information there. So that still hasn't been rectified. So these, I'll respond to more completely. I also would like to just give a special shout-out to the school librarians. Librarians are very special and we don't get enough recognition in our profession.
Excuse me, Fanta Cowens.
I have a kindergarten era at, or, excuse me, first grader at Wyandotte Park. I've come here before and I spoke about some issues that we had with our first grader last year when he was in kindergarten. So I guess first, we're having a much better year this year, so we're, we're very happy about that. We are still struggling to sort of clean up some of the issues that we had last year, some things that I think are in his rec, well, some things that I know are in his record, as well as just some issues that we had raised with the school that we never got feedback on. We, in fact, and part of the reason why I'm here today is because one of the prior meetings I came to, I think it was Ms. Tell, that said, "If you have an issue, bring it to us. We don't know, let you tell us." So I'm here today. I had scheduled a meeting and had a meeting on September 6th with Mr. Brodin and Ms. Wills to discuss these issues. I sent a follow-up email about a month after the meeting, on October 4th. I copied the school board, I copied you all on that email, asking for an update. I also asked for a copy of my son's official, unofficial, official and unofficial file, documents that were kept on my son. Didn't hear anything. Almost a month later, the end of October, October 24th, I sent a second email, asking for an update, again, copied the board. I got an email from Mr. Brodin... Again, copied the board. I got an email from Mr. Brodin the next day, on October 25th, where he said that he had been out on medical leave and that he would try to get back to me, get the information to me by October 26th. I've heard nothing from that point. So, you know, we tried to go through the correct channels that we're told to go through. Tried to, you know, take time out of my workday to meet with people regarding an issue that I think is important regarding my son. I've sent emails, I've sent follow-up emails, and no response. So, yeah. At this point, I'm not sure what else to do, and so that's why I'm here today. I can send the email chain of emails again, but I think once an apparent raises a concern, it would be helpful to hear some information back.
Excuse me. Last is Claire Schneidner. Or sixth. Not last.
Good evening. I just wanted to say hi and thank you for the great work that you do. And I just wanted to stand up and say I'm excited to see the passage of the new policy on gender equity today. And I think that that's coming, and I'm glad that you're supportive and appreciate that, your continued response and attention to this. Thank you.
And that's it. Next on our agenda is the chair's report. No, it's not. The superintendents always do that.
Sorry. I've got a couple things. One, I'll address before the folks who brought up professional learning leave, which is, first of all, thank you to the PTA for your support of that professional learning. That came up the second that I ran into the staff at the conference. I think the first words out of their mouth were, "We're here because of the PTA." And so that was huge for them and I know that meant a lot, that you were willing to invest in them that way, so thank you. We've been talking a lot about professional learning as a key to how you make a school district as best as it can be, and you have to invest in your staff. And one of the things we struggle with is how do you find time for professional learning? It's always something that school districts struggle with, and so I just want to share that we are brainstorming some ideas of how we can improve that. Some of professional learning is learning you need to do somewhere else, right, such as going to a conference and being exposed to your nationwide peers and experts and things like that. A lot of the professional learning that we also need is stuff that we can do right here in City of Decatur, but we just need the time to do it. And so, we are throwing out and brainstorming every possible idea you can think of for how to do that professional learning. Everything from one day, one person suggested a four-day school week and the fifth day is for teachers and staff for having a late start schedule on a regular basis, or an early release schedule on a regular basis, or adding in PL days throughout the school year, or adding in PL days before the school year starts, or after the school year ends, or things like that. Something where we can find opportunities to provide professional learning to our staff that isn't taking them away from our students in undue amount of time. And so that's a struggle and it's a balance, but do be aware that that is something that we're looking at very seriously and trying to come up with some some ideas that are feasible for how we can provide that additional professional learning. There's so much that we want to do and you have to provide that professional learning in order to do it. So, thank you for being great models of support and we really appreciate that and hope others will step up and do things like that in the future. So, thank you for that. A couple other things I want to recognize, since I don't think we had done it as of the last meeting, we have now named Billy Heaton as our next principal, or our new principal of Tally Street Upper Elementary School, so congratulations, Billy. Billy has done fantastic work at Claremont and it's really tough to take him away from Claremont, and I know that his heart is still there and a piece of it will still be there, but he will be a tremendous support and those Claremont students will see him again at Tally as well, so we're very excited for that. And we will begin that search for Claremont principal and Winona Park principal. You may remember that we don't have a permanent position filled there either, so we will be kicking that off very soon, so. I want to give a great big thanks to our Decatur village, all the parents, the community members, the staff members, everybody who who really stepped up during this unprecedented event we had of a system-wide lockdown. I cannot think of a time that a school district has had to lock down every single school in the school district. It was really phenomenal. And the support that we received from law enforcement and from others was absolutely astounding. And what I think really makes this a village is what happened after. And all the stories I was hearing of parents bringing food to staff, or sending cards, or just those messages of support, like, wow, I know that was really hard for you, thank you so much, right? And I know I personally experienced some of it that was going the other way of the teachers who take the time to send a note to the parents of their students to say, hey, your kids are fine, everything's good, you know, here's what you might want to talk about tonight over dinner, or something like that. It's just phenomenal. So, I just want to thank everybody who was involved there. We have amazing staff members who did a great job keeping our kids safe. And I think most parents realize that we had it, right? We take our safety of the kids very seriously. And we had it, and we've learned a lot from the event. One good thing when something like this happens is it gives you an opportunity to see what happens in real life. When something of this scale occurs, we spend a lot of time debriefing afterwards and trying to figure out what went well, what could have gone better, what can we do differently in the future and whatnot. So, I just want to thank everybody who was involved in that process and all the support that they provided. That really meant a lot to us and our staff. One of the things that we'll be talking about tonight is our board policy manual, and I just want to quickly say that we're getting great feedback on the administrative regulations. It's super helpful to get that input from people who can put a new set of eyes on it. We work on them a lot and sometimes we miss things, and so it's great that people are taking the time to provide that input. I just wanted to remind everyone that input is open through December 14th, which is Friday if I remember correctly. And so there's still time to provide some more input. You can just go to our website. There's a quick link to administrative regulations and you can provide feedback there. The next steps, once that closes, each of the administrative regulations has an administrator associated with it who will go through and they'll read all that feedback and determine what needs to be changed in their administrative regulations and make appropriate changes. If they're minor, they'll just bring them straight to cabinet then for a vote. If they're major changes, they may decide that it's best to go out for another round of input, so. It kind of varies depending on the input that's received, but I hope that input keeps coming in because it's very helpful. I think that is the extent of my comments for tonight.
So, next is the chair's report, and I'll be brief. I did want to repeat the congratulations to Mr. Heaton. Congratulations on your new post. I think everybody's very happy with that, so. And I also wanted to mention, I meant to do this first, I meant to do it at the beginning of the meeting, that Tasha White, our fifth board member, is absent today because she's got the flu. Otherwise, she'd be here, and so that's why she's absent. A few congratulations, one is to our hometown hero, Quinesha Jackson, who's a parent at Claremont Elementary. She was named one of the City of Decatur's Hometown Heroes. It's a big honor and we're very proud of her. Next is the Chromebook program. DHS launched their program to let students check out a Chromebook to take home. They said by the end of the first week, one junior came in to hug the library staff because for the first time at DHS, he felt caught up on his homework. So, this is great. I think this is a big part of what we're trying to do with our equity initiatives to make level the playing field. A couple of DHS teams have had some successes. The first is the DHS Robotics Team. Both of the high school robotics teams placed in the top five or six at Saturday's first Tech Challenge Tech Challenge Meet and will now compete in the league championship next week for the chance to go to state. It's awesome. And finally, Personal Finance. DHS students brought home third-place trophy from the Georgia Personal Finance Challenge recently. This is a competition run by the Georgia Council on Economic Education. In it, each school competed with a team of four students who evaluated information from a case study about a fictional family regarding their financial situation and prepared a five-minute presentation about the ways the family could improve their situation. The team presented that information to the judges and to the financial industry who picked the top three teams. So, congrats to Ansel Lewis, Alex Watts, Ella Talmage, and Will Johns, and their faculty sponsor, Melissa Frey. And I think that's it.
Can I add something?
Please.
I just wanted to echo Dr. Duty, I think the board's thanks and gratitude towards you and your team for handling the security threat this past month as well as you did. And, you know, I think everyone in the community was very scared that afternoon and I shared that emotion. I know my children did as well. And it's kind of, that moment is sort of every parent's worst nightmare, and it's very comforting to sort of see that we had a plan and we executed it well, and we executed it well in connection with our, all of our partners and learned some things from it, which is good. Sad that we live in this, you know, day and age where these are the types of things that we have to worry about. And I'd love to sort of explore more conversations and initiatives for how we can, you know, keep these types of things from happening and address the issue, I mean, address the problem and not just be sort of reactionary. I mean, we need to be reactionary. Unfortunately, that's a reality that, of the world that we live in, but I'd love to sort of talk more about how we can work with people in our community to just address the threat of these ongoing issues. And I feel like it's also appropriate to recognize Claire Schneidner since you're here and the work that you've done with the Stop School Shootings Now program, and you've just been a tremendous leader in the community on that initiative for the safety of all of us. And I just think that there's more that, you know, we as a board too can do to... I don't know what the answer is, but to just try to address and elevate this issue and try to tackle it so that we're not just planning, you know, good, good security plans for when there's a threat, but how we can minimize the risk of a threat. Anyways, but congratulations to you and your team. I feel like that's not the right word. I don't know, but thank you to you and your team to be, for being ready for that.
Thank you.
I'm glad you picked that up. That was on my list. I just completely forgot, but I, it was extremely scary, but I did feel good knowing that you guys had it in hand.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Next are our consent items. We have four consent items, the personnel report, the school nutrition report, the financial reports, and number four is the lease for student equipment at Tally Street and Rinfor Middle School, which is updated. Did we have a question about that one?
I think we got additional information. Did you see that yet? He's emailed it and posted, I think.
Yeah, it's all been added. Appreciate that.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
Move to approve the consent items as distributed on agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that carries. Next, we have an informational report, which is our enrollment projections report.
All right, so you've all should have copies of the enrollment projection report, either electronic or in your packet if you get the printed packet. I'll just do a quick summary instead of going through the report page by page, but basically, this report was done by Cooperative Strategies. You may remember that name because they're the same folks who helped us with our boundary planning process. And this is what they do, and I've always been very impressed with their work. You may recall that we had done some projections with them previously, and then we decided to try doing it on our own and we formed a committee and found some experts and had realtors and statisticians and demographers and all kinds of people. And as we dug into that work, and many thanks to Heidi for leading it, it just was clear just how overwhelming it was trying to do those projections and how to do them accurately. And we decided to go back to Cooperative Strategies again, because this is what they do. This is what their work is. And so, they've done a great job here, I think, of providing a very thorough report. The methodology they use is what are called survival ratios. They look at historical trends of how many students matriculate from one grade to the next and how those change over time. They use a lot of different variables in terms of, are there trends more recently that may override what trends looked like in the past and things like that? And the way I describe this particular thing to people is that it's part art and part science, right? And so there is a lot of science behind this in terms of the actual mathematics involved, but there's also a whole lot of art involved in enrollment projections. And so what they do is they have a system they use to go through and make some projections. And so for each school and for the district as a whole, you'll see three sets of projections, low, moderate, and high. And then what they do is they use a whole bunch of other information, and this is where the art comes in. And they come up with what they call the recommended projections, okay? And so, they will look at things like the building permits and what we know about our school district. Sometimes school districts are, their boundaries are growing or shrinking, so they would take in information like that. If we had an annexation coming up, they would take in that kind of information, and they incorporate that into what they're going to actually recommend as their projections. And so, what you'll see on page 18, as the reports are numbered, the page numbers on the reports, you will see our recommended projections for the district as a whole, grade K-12. And so you'll see next year, they are projecting 5,751 students. They're projecting we hit a high, just over 6,000 students, and then it appears to have a little dip at the end of the 10 years, and I do want to address that. So, the one thing is, that you see here is, you may recall last year, we said, there appeared to be some indications we may be coming up to a plateau because we did see a little bit of a decrease in our rate of increase. Sorry, that's the calculus teacher in me talking. So, and so we did feel like there was a plateau coming, and this does kind of reinforce that, that it does appear that we are reaching that carrying capacity of the, of the community as it exists right now. One of the reasons you see that little dip at the end there, you'll actually see it if you go to one of the elementary, lower elementary school projections, because what happens is when you're projecting out 10 years, the kindergarten students in those projections have not been born. And so it's really difficult to project what that is going to be like. And so what they do is, they use the three most recent years of live birth data and just project that average out. And so everything at the lower elementary level, you'll see, it just stabilizes and the projections are the same then year after year because those are children who don't exist, okay? And so that's where it gets complicated with 10 years. When I'm looking at these projections, I am always looking in more the three-to-five-year range. The 10-year range is helpful, but there's a lot more variability when you go out that far. So, I'm really most interested in that three-to-five-year range where you see we're projecting that we'll get to about 6,000 students there. The projections that we requested, beyond just the district projections, we actually requested school-level projections as well. And so you'll see for every single school in there, there's a low, moderate, and high, as well as a recommended projection for all of our schools. You'll see that Tally is included here because we will have that other elementary school next year. So, Tally Street is one of those, oh, I know the other thing I was going to mention. The color coding in the tables is representative of the size of the cohorts of students as they flow through the school district. And so as you know, you get, you get natural fluctuations in the size of cohorts of students. And so the red represents a little bigger cohort flowing through the system and the blue represents a little smaller cohort flowing through the system. So, that's what those color coatings represent. So, I'm very pleased with it. This is extremely helpful as we go through and do our planning. We have already plugged these numbers into, you may recall that staffing allotment process, which I'll talk more about in a coming meeting, but we've already plugged these in and started using them for our planning for next school year. You may recall, last time Cooperative Strategies did their projections, they were extremely accurate, and so I would anticipate similar results this time. The other thing that Cooperative Strategies is working on for us right now is a yield analysis. And that report is not yet available, but hopefully it will be ready for our next meeting. And what we asked them to do there was similar to what we have been trying to do in the spreadsheets we use for our annexation process, which is, look at where our students are coming from in terms of single-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, what part of the city, things like that. And so they're actually working on that project for us right now, and so we'll bring that as soon as it's available. And I think that'll be an important aspect as we look at new developments that are coming online, apartment buildings, things like that, as well as if any annexation proposals come up in the future. It'll be nice to have that data from that process as well. So, that's the gist of where we are. We plan to go back to them each year and have them update this and just have that be a regular part of our... a regular part of our annual process following our October counts, provide that to them, provide them with any new information on housing changes and projects and things like that, and have them redo this each year. So, any questions I can address for anyone?
I just wanted to first say that CSD deserves a lot of credit for being able to accommodate more than 100% growth since 2009. That's a lot of growth for a small school system, and it's taken a lot of planning with staffing and infrastructure, so really good work on that. And I think this was a great report. I think it's critical that we continue to have it annually. Like you said, it can help us to project pretty, pretty accurately, seems to be about five years out, which helps us to react and budget for, well, so far it's been growth. And one, one thing that I did notice, and we have talked about that, but I wanted to underscore one thing in the report that jumped out at me, and that's that there seems to be a huge increase in multifamily development. And I know you've mentioned this and we've talked about it, but I really wanted to underscore the importance of monitoring that. Just the past, you know, the past five years, the report shows 1,829, this is building permits, but I think they mean perhaps units of multifamily. As compared to the five years before that, 2009 to 2013, there were only 15. So, we're talking 15 compared to 1,829.
This is on page 12, if anyone wants to.
On page 12. And, you know, a lot of these estimates do depend on trends, and this is a big change in trend, so it's something we need to really watch. But I did want to say that over the past year, I have appreciated the progress that's, that's been made by you and your team. Heidi Watley particularly, I know, has put in a lot of time and effort to try to get some numbers around these developments. And so, I think it's important that we continue to do that and keep, keep an accurate watch and tracking of what is coming up, what is being built, when is it going to be completed, when are these students coming online? So, thank you for this report. And, and, you know, it seems that they do have their eye on this, but anything we can do to, to watch it more closely will probably help.
Agreed.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
You've done a lot of the things we've asked for, for many years in providing the low, medium, and high. An incredibly thorough kind of introductory. I mean, anybody should be able to pick this thing up and read it and have a much better understanding of everything that's going into the enrollment projections and the planning. I was going to comment that I'm a little concerned whenever I see the live birth and the survival cohort ratios, because that's been one thing which we've had a lot of trouble with historically. And this does a great job of actually showing that, you know, you have 150% growth from birth addresses to kids arriving in kindergarten, which my interpretation is that at least a third of the kids who show up at kindergarten were born somewhere else, people who moved in. And so, I, I appreciate the difficulty. I think this is probably one of the best reports, enrollment reports, we've had in my tenure and the tracking that I did before sitting at this table. I'm a little concerned that we may still be a little bit, you know, anytime we predict kindergarten rates, if we miss too high, we compound it high over the years. If we miss too low, it compounds low. So, I would just emphasize what you said, very good for three to five years, great to come back and redo the analysis every couple of years, just to resync, because once you drag that, that spreadsheet column out far to the right, it's kind of a fuzzy crystal ball.
Agreed.
I am glad to see that in almost all the scenarios, we're hitting around that 500 students per grade level, which is where we've been building for the last 10 years. So, you know, Brooke Nation sat back there and patted herself on the back. I think we've done a pretty good job on the total capacity targets that we've been aiming for. So, thank you.
Great.
We talked about this a little bit when we met, but I'd be curious to see kind of how our, how our actual growth fits over what our past projections have been, so that we can sort of see how close we've been to the mark.
And we're working on that right now. I agree.
And I, and I think, maybe it's in here, but it's not popping out at me at, at the moment, just to kind of compare what our, to see, are we, what, how does, how does our enrollment projections align with our capacity and?
That'll come in that next phase, probably January, February, when we start talking facilities. We will plug these into that other process of what actual number of classrooms we have and things like that.
Right, right.
So, you will see that coming up.
Perfect, thanks.
So, I'll echo the appreciation for the report, and I do think that these guys do a great job, and I appreciate getting them involved. And I also like seeing the long-term projections. In the past, we've not done them because they're inaccurate inherently, but we've kind of asked for it, sort of like, let's just take a swag at it so that we have an idea. And so, I appreciate seeing it, even though we're going to discount it and say that it's not much information there. We do projections like this in my work, you know, we do hydrologic projections. And the way that works is that you can make, you can use the current information, information on current water conditions, soil moisture and that kind of thing. And it improves your predictions greatly for the short term, for about six months. And then after that, everything reverts to the mean. You still make the long-term projections, but at that point, the long-term projections have nothing to do with your current circumstances, because there's, they're just completely disconnected. And I think that might be what we've got here, which is that for 10 years out, if we're just going back to some kind of an average based on live births, it might ignore the fact that there's still an attractant to the Decatur City schools that we're going to continue to be higher than the mean, because of the same factors that have driven growth over the past decade.
Yeah, I totally agree. What it, what it will take into account, like Garrett said, and I didn't look at the number, I think you said it's about 150% from live births to kindergarten five years later. So, as long as the rate of people moving in with small children continues in a, in a similar ratio to the live births, then the survival method is still accurate. Where it becomes inaccurate is if there's a change in the process somehow, where either people start moving here before they have kids, so the births then get registered here, or if, if people stop having kids here because only families with kids are moving in. If you have a change like that, that's when you really have a difference than in those long-term projections. So, the, the cohort survival method is nice because it, without having to know every single variable, such as what apartment complexes were built when, and when did they open, and how many people moved in, and did they move in before the school year started or after? And you can get into this morass of information. What it does is it kind of levels that out and says, what happened, right? And as long as those other things continue happening, happening similarly in the future, that cohort survival methodology works. That's where then the art comes in, of having, having known some of that history, and we spend a lot of time sharing with them the history that led to the historical enrollment. Knowing that history, we can let them know, hey, here are some new things that are happening, or some changes from what happened in the past to what's happening now. And that's where the art of then deciding what should the recommended projections come in, so.
I couldn't, I couldn't tell, because I didn't read closely enough, whether or not the, you know, I would expect the plateau to occur as a result of build-out for the city of Decatur, that we just don't have any more places to stuff multifamily houses. And I'm wondering if that kind of, I know that in the past, we have done that, you know, how many of the houses are left yet to flip and how many vacant lots?
So, that's not actually part of this report. This report, the plateau we see here is an artifact, I think, of us having reached the carrying capacity of the city of Decatur, that there's only so many more that you can do. But it's, it's incorporated into that survival ratio methodology that you see it. It's not an actual analysis of units to people.
You think, you think the fact that we're getting there is reflected in the numbers we've got?
Exactly, exactly. What we will see in that yield analysis that they're working on is a better predictor of, as we hear of new projects coming online, like what Heather was talking about, we will better be able to estimate what that means for our future enrollments. And so, if we have a major development happening and it's not something we've seen before that wouldn't be typical of what would already be part of the survival ratio methodology, if it looks to be quite different, we will have a good idea of what we can expect for numbers of students at varying grade levels from such a, a development. And that way, when we do the projections the following year, we can incorporate that into figuring out, are we going to see a bump because of that large development of some sort? So, the two, the two brought together will make our projections much more accurate.
Yeah. And, and related to that, you mentioned that you've got Cooperative Strategies working on the annexation piece?
Yes, and, well, the, so what they're, they call yield analysis. So, you know, in our annexation spreadsheets, how we have, we've been doing the calculations of how many units were there, how many kids do we get, so how many kids per unit do you get? They've done that in a much more, more robust citywide manner than we were doing it previously.
When we discussed this previously, there was some difficulty getting some of the data that we needed. Have we got the data that we need?
Have we gotten that, what we need for that? I assume we have, for the yield analysis?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
And this is for inside and outside, because part of it is annexation.
Well, so, the data that we're using is inside, is inside city limits, I believe.
So, it's yield per housing type?
Basically.
So, then you've got to map it onto what the housing types?
Yep. And then the other thing we're doing is, you may recall, we worked with the city to get invited to their development meetings, so we could be, have, be more aware of what's happening when. They have, several of those meetings have been canceled, but Heidi is working to get back on that schedule to make sure they keep inviting us. And that will be kind of our canary in the coal mine, where we can see what's coming down the pike and sometimes quite far out, right? Like, they may be talking about a project that's not even going to break ground until five years from now or something, and that way, we can have a little bit, you know, anytime we can provide more information to Cooperative Strategies as they're doing projections, we'll make them more and more accurate.
My last comment is on, I'm looking forward to the master planning process. I wanted to mention, because I've been approached by several in the community, and I'm expecting that others have, of, people are very interested in the master planning process, and in particular in our role, what our role might be in developing the United Methodist Children's Home.
Okay.
And particularly for the sports fields. And so, the answer so far has been, I mean, initially, my answer was, that's kind of the city's deal, and we're going to find out the city's plan for it. But now, there's a plan that does kind of have a role for the school system with the sports field. But we don't know if we have any money, and we don't have our handle on the, the school's needs. But so, there's a lot of interest in the, in that component of the master planning process.
Makes sense.
Thought I'd mention it.
Great.
I did have some reflections on what's been said. Heather mentioned the multifamily permits, and I just jotted down, 2000 to 2010, there were 750 of them. From 2010 to now, 1,834, which is more than 250% the past decade. Decatur grew 10% from 2000 to 2010. That, where are they going to put more multifamily units? Well, they've been figuring it out. And so, we could very easily, the population growth of the city grew almost in line with the multifamily units, although there's a little bit more on top. We could be looking at, you know, 20% growth in this decade. So, it's, it's pretty impressive. Again, great work.
So, let me just ask on that note, a point of clarification. The projections that they did, that, that assumed the, that included the, the United Methodist Children's Home area that's being developed. Is that correct?
Not specifically for this analysis, because this is based on the population at each given school. Where that would be incorporated is when they're making the judgment call of how, when we're doing these projections, for instance, for Tally Street, right? Do we need to give more of those fourth and fifth grade students to Tally than to Fave because we know this big development is coming online or something like that? That's where those pieces of information come in. They're not actually part of the analysis itself, they're part of the more subjective judgment call that the demographers make when they make the projection.
So, I mean, it seems like at least, maybe if I'm understanding this right, one takeaway could be is to not, not get our hopes up too high, that things are leveling out, because that may very well not be the case as that area gets developed.
Yeah, I, I do think we'd need to temper any expectations, because Decatur is a, is a fluctuating environment, right? What, what will make these projections under-project is if the developments moving forward are not characteristic of the developments that have happened recently. So, if there was a huge boom in, in development after these projections that was not started or present in the years leading up to them, then they will under-project. But if the, if the development coming, in the coming years, is similar in scale to the development that has been happening, then these will be rather accurate. So, it depends on the scope of, of how big those developments are compared to the past.
But so, they, when they did these projections, they understood that Decatur was annexing this whole area and it was going to develop and everything?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I think that's the right area, right?
Yeah.
For growth.
Yeah, possibly.
Yep.
I had thought the plateau was just because my family's aging out of the city.
That could be. That's a big part of it.
To be honest, it's, you know, when you, when you're adding at the early grades, we've had this, this mismatch, where we've had fairly small graduating classes. And once all the classes get up to that 450, 500, whatever, the plateau happens.
That's right.
And so, I guess the delicate dance for us is, is we watch and interact with the city commission and the other things that are going on, on either annexation or large multi, multi-person developments, whatever the right acronym is, that choice of how the property's developed and making sure that we have a seat at the table to influence those in a way which, you know, if we, if we do it, if we do the delicate dance right, we plateau and maybe slightly grow in a maintainable rate. I think you said it best one time, David, when you said it's about managing the growth, not controlling it or stopping it, or just managing it. So, I think we're doing pretty well, and it's going to continue to be a delicate dance going forward.
Yep.
Okay, should we move on to the action items? All right, our first action item is the adoption of the board policy manual. Do you want to tell us what's, what we've got in front of us?
Yeah, so this item is the same item that was presented at the final, at the last board meeting. There are some changes we discussed at that meeting as potentially needing to happen, but we decided to bring the exact same version forward, just in order to be as transparent as possible with the community in terms of what we're voting on. And then, as we've talked about before, the board policy manual is a living document, and we will probably be changing it at nearly every meeting as we start to build it out a little bit more, or find that we want to clarify some language, or maybe add some language, or whatever. So, this is the exact same version of the item that came at the last board meeting, and, and nothing has been changed from there.
So, there are some things that we know already, as you just said, that we need, need to change. And David had proposed some additions that, that weren't noticed last time, and they're not part of what we're proposing this time.
Correct.
So, instead, the idea is that we'll bring that forward next month.
Correct.
The other thing I wanted to note is that we had discussed changing the blurb that appears right in front of the table of contents. It says, upon adoption by a vote of the board, the policies in this policy manual shall supersede all board policies and affect at the time of adoption, and such policies shall be categorized as administrative regulations under the authority of the superintendent. Whatever we decide to do with that, it's not a solution that, that I think is a good one. We've discussed it, so it's not that I'm surprised by it. But I think that it's messy, because we don't want to take the entire old policy manual that we're trying to clean up and replace. And now, we've got the new policy manual, we've got conflicting old policies that now have the status of administrative regulations, which for all people on your staff have equal, you know, dignity with the policy itself. And it's just a big conflicting morass of confusion, which I think we should avoid.
Yeah. I actually have an idea, I haven't, I just came up with, I haven't had a chance to share, if you don't mind.
Please.
I think what we might want to do is strike that, part of that statement, leave the board, existing board policies as board policies, but in this, in our resolution, clarify that this policy manual supersedes any conflicting policies, because that's the, the biggest worry, is that there might be a conflict between what's in the policy man- Because that's the, the biggest worry, is that there might be a conflict between what's in the policy manual and what's in the former board policy. So, I think if we clarify in our, in our resolution or our adoption motion, that this policy manual, if there's a conflict, this policy manual is what will be the, the guiding language. And then, that will give us time to figure out what we want to do with the rest of the board policies. Does that make sense? Because there may be some conflicts, I don't think there are going to be many, but I don't think we've looked at it closely enough to know that some of the language we, we drafted for the board policy manual that's here, sometimes we tweaked some things a little bit to make it better. And that may make it now conflict with an or, conflict with an old board policy. Does that make sense?
It does. I, what I would propose is, and maybe that's what we do for now. And, but by next month, I would like to have a, yet another solution, which is that either by next month, we've gone through the table that, the, the firm, I think it was, whichever firm provided us a table of the policies that are required by state and federal law, that we need to identify those, identify the policies that address, that fill those requirements, and either incorporate them, or figure that it's covered and do away with it altogether. So, whatever we do, I think we should do for one month only.
Yep.
And, and get this cleaned up nice and tight. We'd hope to have that ready for this meeting. We don't. So, I think the solution of saying, we'll keep the old policies in effect to the extent they are required by law, and to the extent they don't conflict with whatever we've got, is probably the best we can do.
I'm the person who dropped the ball on that one.
I didn't mean to say.
That's okay.
No, no, Garrett and I talked about doing it like Wednesday, so you have no time to do it.
But I'll commit to, to having something, or trying to have something ready for us at the work session next week. At least something that we can, you know, have our first glance at. I would suggest that we use those, those special words, those parts which are in conflict, as opposed to the whole policy, so that only the parts that conflict, conflict are, are superseded. So, should we, you know?
I'm curious, let's push, kind of, if I can, push back.
Sure, go ahead.
My, my preference would be to obliterate them, except to the extent they are needed, and not in conflict.
I think the long-range plan, I, what I'd love for us to be able to do next month, or the following, is, you know, take the time to look at all the things that David prepared, and let's get those out there, vetted and approved, and with whatever changes are necessary. Have something in there that says what's required by law. And then, you know, resolve as a board that we're gonna get it done on a certain plan, on a certain schedule, and then set the deadline and make it so. Whatever that schedule and whatever that deadline is, that we, you know, review it section by section until they're all, all the old policies are gone, have been rewritten, and either categorized as administrative regulations, or those small parts of them that need to be pulled up and included into the board policy manual, it's done. I see furrowed brows, I'm waiting to hear what Annie has to say.
No, I, I think, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I entirely understand what you're proposing, Garrett, or how it's different from what?
I don't think it's very different. I think I'm just stating, trying to state the whole.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I want us to have one policy manual. I think for, I can only imagine kind of the legal gymnastics that would need to be done to determine if one of our policies conflict with any of our huge wide range of pre-existing policies that we had. So, but I do want to advance the ball and get this done. So, I think the way that Louis framed it by having this, having you supersede our prior policies, except to the extent that our prior policies are necessary as required by law, or otherwise not in conflict with what we currently have, then that would be what we-
I'm hoping they're writing that down.
Operate under for, for the next month, and then I would like to get it resolved, because I, it is a little messy and cumbersome, but I think it's sufficient for one month.
And just to clarify, then, next month, we're going to incorporate the red line that David had added?
I thought we'd have a discussion of that now. But the idea would be to incorporate, to the extent those changes, we decide that they should be incorporated, yes. Then the idea is to bring them forward next month. And ideally, some other stuff related to these required policies.
And there were some minor comments that I made, I'm assuming those will be incorporated as well?
Exactly.
Mostly administrative comments that I made.
Are, are those the comments that I had summarized of, is it same set of comments?
There was, after I did, I think we called it version 1.1.1, or something like that. After that version, I did get some more, like, I think you gave me some comments, you might have given me some comments after that, that were some, some additional things we probably want to, either it's just something that was a typo, or something that just knew.
It was more syncing them to reference correctly with the ARs, so there was a lot of that, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any, so that's kind of the broad framework. I don't know if we, we had this thing in front of us so long, but is there any discussion that we needed, any of the content?
Are we gonna amend that one section, that one blurb, to whatever Annie said?
Yes.
So, do you wanna, did you write that down?
We're gonna let Louis state that.
I'm, I'm gonna do my best to say.
I wrote some of it.
I'd say that the blurb, instead of saying what it says, it says, I don't know that, if you say the policies in this manual supersede all prior board policies. I was assuming it's adopted, so it's not gonna talk about it at the time. So, supersede all prior board policies, except to the extent that any prior policy is required by state or federal law, and is not in conflict with the policies in this manual. So, if we, if we stated a preference here, that's what should control.
So, moved.
Second.
That's for the amendment.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous?
That's the amendment, should we do it one more time?
Oh, shoot, now we have to vote?
Yeah, for the whole thing, as amended.
Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the manual?
Motion to approve the manual as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Only other, I, I wanted to make one comment, because I don't think we have the administrative regulations on the agenda for tonight.
Correct.
And, and that's by design, which is that part of our process here is that we're setting policies, and the policies are supposed to be broad directions to the superintendent. Superintendent, who then has the delegated authority to figure out the details of whatever the broad policies that we've passed are. And so, the administrative regulations are really the domain and the responsibility of the superintendent and his team. And the process of developing them should be separate from the board process, because in comments on the administrative regulations, need to go primarily to David, or excuse me, to our superintendent and to his team, because that's the primary audience for your comments on the administrative regulations. And, you know, issues with those regulations need to be resolved at the administrative level first. Ultimately, the board's gonna see them, and if there's an issue, will respond by providing more direction in the policy manual.
Exactly.
Saying that this administrative regulation didn't hit the mark, or upon reflection, we think we need to provide more direction from a board level. But to respect this process, we need to keep the processes separate. And so, people really need to take your administrative regulation process and figure that you are the audience for those comments and not the board.
Very good, that's right.
Okay. With that, we can move on to the facility naming item?
All right, so you'll see an attachment there that's kind of an infographic about our facility naming process. As you know, we went out to the community and requested information or ideas about naming some of our facilities, specifically the str, the school on Tally Street. I won't go through all the details there, but you can see that we received 139 proposals. We received most of them from parents, but also from employees, resident students, and a retiree or two. And the results overwhelmingly were for Tally Street Upper Elementary. Nearly half of the proposals said that's what we want to call it. We did have a close second, or not a close second, but a second of about 8.7%, which were about Mayor, former Mayor Elizabeth Wilson. And then, we had a lot of other responses. But 62 out of the 139 were for Tally Street. So, the recommendation we have here tonight is to name the street, or the school on Tally Street, Tally Street Upper Elementary School. A couple of things I'll point out there, you may remember the discussions in the past of, we want to emphasize that these are elementary schools, and that's why we, we're using that verbiage, upper elementary. And the, Tally Street does fit with our, what we have done with our naming of other, other elementary schools. They're named related to the neighborhood where they are. You'll also see the Fifth Avenue Upper Elementary School. Right now, the, the legal name of that, in the eyes of the state, is Fifth Avenue Elementary School, so it's really just adding the word upper. So, that is something that we talked about previously as well. And then, I'm really pleased to say that we intend to rename this building with your support, the M. Elizabeth Wilson School Support Center. We were able to touch base with Ms. Wilson earlier today or yesterday, and she is absolutely thrilled and honored and, and humbled, just as you would expect, to have this building named after her, and she is very excited. And I really look forward to the opportunity to have an official naming ceremony, and have her here, and do some tours and things like that. But, as you know, she's an incredible woman who is so important to this community, and so is a real honor to be able to name this building after her. And so, those are our recommendations, is that we would name those three facilities as listed in the board item.
Any discussion? Or I guess we need a motion, I suppose?
Move to approve the following, the facility names for the 1920 school year as recommended. M. Elizabeth Wilson School Support Center, Fifth Alley, Fifth Avenue Upper Elementary School, Tally Street Upper Elementary School.
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Well, I think it's great.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense, the way we did the upper elementaries. They mirror each other, and they reflect the elementary pattern. I'm also very pleased to see that we're honoring Ms. Mayor Wilson, given her history with the Beacon community, so.
Did anyone consider adding the word "one" to Fifth Avenue One Upper Elementary? Or Tally Street One Upper Elementary?
No.
That wasn't considered, okay.
No.
If you're gonna say that, I have to ask why there's no mention of school in the school face.
Yeah, so it was, it was really tempting, but. It was, it was.
But I thought, of all the comments received, I did think that the Ruby Bridges was inspired.
That was a good one.
It was.
It made me wonder if there are opportunities to use, to name some of the spaces, or, you know, you know, we could, if, if we could use, in an educational way, the opportunity to name cafeterias or auditoriums. And I thought that was a particularly good one.
I do, I agree.
But, okay, have we voted yet?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, chair votes aye, so it's unanimous.
I feel like, sorry to interrupt, but, so, tonight we adopted our, our new policies and named a new building, three new names. I mean, like, I sort of feel like there's been a lot of things that we've been working on. Policy governance being a big one, Garrett, that you've been kind of working on since you were on the board, and since I think you first got on the board, and a lot of it's been sort of slow-going and a long process. But I sort of feel like tonight, we have sort of voted on the culmination of a number of things, which have been major lifts.
That's a great point.
Making progress.
Yeah.
Thank you, David.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I remember talking about policy governance in my interview, actually.
Yeah, I do, too.
Great.
Discussion items, what do we, what's?
We have no discussion items, but.
I do have one that we should mention, is that typically, at this time of year, we announce our intentions regarding office or elections in January.
Right.
So, I know that Tosh is not here, so I don't know whether we need to have that conversation or not. I'll just go out and put myself out there as not interested.
Thanks, Garrett.
So noted. And I think for, just to remind us all of the gist of that, that practice is just to try not to have surprises come to the January board meeting. So, do make sure to talk to colleagues and make sure they know your thoughts on elections and whatnot, so.
And, and more specifically, I think the commitment that we had made is that we would keep everybody, that we, we would tell everybody.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. Exactly.
I think you get to pick two people that you want to share.
Okay.
So, the next thing's the board committee reports.
Property tax.
Jump to that one. So, the, the RFP is out for the work of the property tax study committee. We have received word as of today, I believe, from, which one was that, Ashaki?
Georgia State.
Georgia State. And I also did reach out to cooperative strategies, because this is very similar to the kind of work they do, and I, and we thought they might be interested in maybe partnering with a university or something like that. Heather and I were talking about that earlier today. So, I did reach out to them to see if they might be interested in something like that. So, we, we know one group at least intends to submit a proposal. I think maybe we should go ahead, because the intents are due tomorrow. And I think, let's kind of monitor if some come in. I do think we can easily change the dates if we see that that's just not gonna be sufficient, what kind of inform, or interest we're getting. There's nothing wrong with us extending those dates at that time. And that's not unusual with an RFP at all. That's one of the reasons you have that intent to submit process, is so you can get a feel for, hey, did we hit the mark here or not, so.
Especially this time of year, I feel like it's been very busy. We put this out right between Thanksgiving and, you know, the holidays, and, I mean, I for one am ready to extend right now, because I would like to get more than one.
That would be fine, too, if you guys would like.
So, I'd like to, if it's okay, you know, and just, I'll just, I would like to defer to you to-
Sure.
To sort of shift all of those dates, maybe have the intent to submit be due after, right after the holidays.
That's fine, we can do that.
Just when we resume school, and maybe just shift all the other dates to sort of align with our next board meetings, and when we might want to know something before the next, you know, aligning board meetings.
I'm happy to do that, are you all okay with that? Okay.
Did you get, I've forgotten, you might have said, so I'm happy that we've heard from Georgia State. Have we heard from the Denson?
We have not, although Ashaki has reached out. We emailed folks, but then she's trying to follow up with phone calls. I do think it's challenging this time of year. My guess, the universities may already even be on break, I'm not sure.
Some of them have had finals and are done, so.
I think they take like two months off in the middle of the year, I'm pretty sure, you know, but.
I think that-
That could be part of the challenge.
That institute, I think, is also maybe, it might be bigger, and it might be harder to identify. I think they do a lot of different things.
The good thing with that one was, they did have a generic email address that we made sure to contact as well, hoping that they would get it to the right people, possibly, but.
I think following up with individual calls is probably wise.
Yeah, okay, I will shift those dates, and we'll get that reposted that way. And I'll let the, if we do get any intents to submit, we'll let them know, we're shifting the dates also.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, we're on to future dates, and we have the board work plan. Forgive me, have we, I think you might have sent an email that I have not registered with me-
Yeah, let me find that.
On the plan for the 17th.
Yeah.
We have a work session on the 17th?
I don't know if that's hit the calendar, but that's the date.
It's, it's, next Monday is the work session, because I incorrectly put 12/7 on the email. So, here is the plan that I had sent out, and let me know your thoughts on it. So, the, the topic for the work session is the, basically, the administrative regulations regarding to the employee protection and the, what, what are they called? Employee protection and employee complaints. So, what we were proposing is that David Adams would cover kind of a brief hi, brief history of how we got to the point we are, what the work of that committee upon which much of those ARs are related, what that was based upon, and then have some Q and A after that, so more of a historical perspective. And then, David would cover the intent of the staff protection and the employee complaint ARs. Why do we need them? What are, what are staff being protected from, et cetera? So, get that kind of, what are they about? Why do we need them? And have some Q and A there, and then take some time to go through each AR of making sure we've talked about the staff protection AR, and then some Q and A time, and then the employee complaint AR, and some Q and A time. We also, have you already invited Cheryl Namias or not? You may recall Cheryl Namias was a key part of the committee and the work there, so we've invited her to come as well, because she has a lot of great information to share there. So, that was the tentative plan. We're happy to adjust it if you'd like to do something different. So that was the tentative plan. We're happy to adjust it if you'd like to do something different.
Sounds okay to me.
Sounds okay to me. I remember now I did look at your email. I just had forgotten.
Sure.
The other thing we need to talk about is, according to our new policy manual, we're supposed to update and refresh really the work plan each year. And so January meeting, we're supposed to have a draft that sketches it out.
Yep.
And this year, we kind of did it for six months, and then, and then did it sort of ad hoc, month by month. It'd be nice to think through the arc a little bit better.
How do you wanna tackle that?
That's a question. How do you, does anyone have an idea? We can do some kind of an email chain where people throw out topics, and we can try to sort them into a calendar.
That sounds like a good start, so we can have a minute to think it over.
Okay.
Yeah.
If there are any that need to be done in a certain order.
Yeah.
You can hopefully.
So I, I will ask that we, we've, having some issues with the responsiveness on these email chains, so let's do it this way, but let's all make a point to respond.
I will, I'll kick that off, and then we can, everybody can jump in. Okay?
Is there anything else to discuss on that, or are we ready?
Nothing else.
Is that our whole agenda?
It is.
Okay, we do have a need for, for an executive session to discuss legal, personnel, and discussion of records that are exempt from public disclosure.
And I do not anticipate any actions from this.
Don't anticipate a vote following. We have a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.